For the record, Mr. All and Mr. Fry did indicate to me that they would not be present. Before, there are some comments, before we begin, I would ask the board of presidents if we could walk on or at least add to the agenda the 2019-2020 IDEAAD and IDEA 619 subgrant agreement with the WIU this evening, something that we really need to do. We'll address that during the meeting.
We'll motion. Ask for motion. Leave a motion to add this to the agenda as a walk-on item. So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye, propose. We're going to have a presentation by Jamie Doyle and Christopher Bamber from PFM Independent Financial Advisory Services. Do you have any other copies that somebody in the audience can have?
Do you want to do an introduction first?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. Good evening, I'm Jamie Doyle from Public Financial Management, or PFM for short, and with me this evening is Chris Bamber. We serve as independent financial advisors, so our company made a conscious decision at inception forty-some years ago that we would always be an independent financial advisor, meaning we're never affiliated with a bank or underwriting firm. We have no end investors that we need to make happy. We make you happy as our client. We represent your interests and your interests alone. You have two documents at your place. The bottom document was our response to your RSP process. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but I wanted you to have a copy. Where we'd like to start off is the document labeled Introduction to PFM. And you can see on that front cover, our team consists of myself, Zach Williard, who could not be here this evening, and Chris Bamber. We always work in teams so that if you have a meeting pop up or something unexpected, if one of us is on vacation or ill, there's always someone on the team available to you at a moment's notice. If you look at page two, we do a lot of different things at PFM, but we drew a blue dotted box around the Financial Advisory Services. That's what Chris and I do specifically. And that includes transaction management, bond pricing, credit strategies, and capital If you look at page three, I'd like to spend a bit of time on this page. What is an independent financial advisor? So we have a legal fiduciary responsibility to represent your best interests throughout the entire process of any debt issuance. That includes the selection of financing type. That can be a bond issue, a bank loan, bond pool. Basically, our job is to leave no rock unturned and explore all of the possibilities and help customize the option that best fits your needs and objectives. We also look at method of sale, and we'll look at this in a little bit more depth in a minute, but there's different ways to have a sale. It can be on a pure competitive basis, it can be on a negotiated basis, or it can be on a hybrid basis, between the two. We work with negotiations of interest rates, commissions, and loan provisions, and ultimately we recommend whether or not to proceed based on market conditions at the time of sale. The picture at the bottom of page three really says a thousand words. On the blue side of the table, if you will, you see us sitting with you, the issuer, and representing our fiduciary duty to you. And on the right-hand side of the table, in the yellow, you can see the banker underwriter sitting on the other side of the table with their investors, and they have no legal fiduciary responsibility to you. So you need an underwriter or a bank in any transaction, but having us on your side of the table really pays for itself many times over. If you look at page four, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this page, but now banks and underwriters are legally required to provide you with a G17 letter, and these are excerpts of language that are taken from these letters. They basically have to tell you that this is an arms-length transaction, they have interests that differ from yours, those types of statements that aren't necessarily confidence-inspiring to you, the issuer. So again, that's why you have us on your side of the table to represent your best interests. So I'll let you peruse that at your leisure, but I won't spend a lot of time on that page. On page five, a little bit about PFM. We are nationwide, we have about thirty-seven offices across the country. Chris and I are based out of our Harrisburg office, which is our largest office. We're co-headquartered between Harrisburg and Philadelphia, but we cover the entire state of Pennsylvania, and we spend the week doing figure eights around the state as we service almost half the school districts in the Commonwealth. And you can see on the blue column on the left, our number-one rankings for 2018 in all of those categories under type and sector. And then you can see on the yellow column on the right-hand side of the page, our overall long-term first-place ranking going all the way back to 1998. On page six, this is interesting, this is Pennsylvania-specific. So on the left-hand side of the page, this compares PFM to other financial advisors in terms of Pennsylvania experience. So you can see in terms of number of issues and in terms of dollars, we have the most volume, the most deals, the most experience. We're in the market every single day and every single week, and see a lot more transactions than anyone else. And then on the right-hand side, even more interesting, this compares PFM to the underwriters, and some of those names may look familiar to you. These are the banks and underwriters that work in Pennsylvania, or at least the top tier of them. And you can see even compared to the big-name underwriters that may look familiar, that we still do more deals in terms of number of deals and in dollars than even the big-name household names that you're used to hearing.
So I think one of the main takeaways from this page is while you may never have heard of PFM as an independent financial advisor, or may not have been aware of PFM services, we are in the market as much, if not more, than any other competitor out there, not only in terms of financial advisor, but also against any other underwriter. And so it really kind of speaks to the market position, market dominance, meaning that when we're in the market every week with all of our different clients, we've worked with a lot of different folks that give us information that we can then relay and leverage that on our clients for their benefit as well. So we're very proud of these charts, not only just because it speaks to the kind of work we've done, but also it speaks to kind of our position in the market.
On page seven is a sample list of our clients. I believe we provided a more comprehensive list in the RSP response itself, but many of those names should look familiar to you. On page eight, scope of services. I won't belabor each and every one of those bullet points, but we liken ourselves to the quarterback of a transaction. So from beginning to end, A to Z, we lead you through the process and again, help you customize the plan of finance to best meet your needs and objectives. And we're around every day of the year, not just when you're doing a transaction. We're available to your administration when new legislation pops up and they want to discuss it. We're always on top of that. We'll get into it in a little bit, but helping you to maintain your credit rating, helping you to keep on top of your continuing disclosure obligation. We're around every day of the year to help you as needed. Page nine is the PFM team that I described, so Chris and I are here tonight, and Zach was not able to make it this evening, but these would be your main points of contact. Page ten, as I mentioned, it's our job to look at all of the options available to you, not just on underwriting services, but we would look at all the options and help you narrow down what best meets your needs. Page eleven, this is important. We have a process called the dual-track approach whereby, in the spirit of leaving no stone unturned, we start the process with a competitive bank loan RSP. We get the responses back, and that bank loan RSP goes out to all of our bank contacts as well as all of your local bank contacts. We get the responses back, we evaluate them, and we boil each proposal down to true interest cost. So it takes into account any fees they're charging and the rate they're proposing. Anything that's in that proposal gets boiled down into one number called the true interest cost. We then compare the best bank loan proposal to the bond market on a true interest cost basis, and whichever produces the best economic answer is what we ultimately end up recommending that you proceed with. So that would be part of the process. On page twelve, I mentioned before, there's a couple of different ways to place your debt or sell your debt. You have historically done the far-right-hand side, negotiated, where you've selected one underwriter, and you've not used an independent financial advisor historically, but we have about half our clients, they do negotiated sales, and they say, "PFM, go negotiate with ABC Bank and come back to us with the best possible deal that the market has to offer." And we do that. The other half of our clients, roughly, do the blue bubble on the left-hand side of the page, where they don't care who their underwriter is, they just care that they're getting the lowest true interest cost. And so the competitive process in that arena invites any registered broker-dealer in Pennsylvania or in the nation can log on and bid on their bond. We use PFMauction.com for that platform, and you're welcome to go on to that platform and look at the upcoming calendar. There's some auctions on there that you can replay and check it out if you'd like to. But again, in that arena, it all boils down to the lowest true interest cost to the school district. And then we have some clients that do the hybrid option in the middle, and a lot of times, the reason they do the hybrid option is maybe there's something that's not plain vanilla about their deal. Maybe they don't have a great credit rating and they can't do a full-blown competitive sale. But for those reasons, they want a competitive process, but they're not plain vanilla enough to do a full-blown competitive sale. So then we do a mini RSP process, which is an RSP just kind of like the bank loan RSP, but for bonds, and that goes out to several different underwriters of your choosing and give access to our list of contacts as well. And again, whatever the best proposal is, based on true interest cost, that's what we ultimately end up recommending. Your credit rating is such that you would not have to do a hybrid, you could certainly do a full-blown competitive if you wanted to. If you look at page thirteen, I'll skip over that very quickly, but this is one of the things we would assist with. You have continuing disclosure agreements on each of your issues and obligations to post your demographic and economic information to the Emma website each year, and so we would assist with that. On page fourteen, we would also assist with credit rating preparation and share some of our strategies on credit rating. There's some things you can do ahead of time to position yourself in a better light with the credit rating agencies, so we can help strategize on that. And then getting into the meat of things, on page fifteen, your timing is excellent. We just set new all-time low interest rates here at the end of August this year. This is a snapshot, three different snapshots of the same index. This is the MMD index, which stands for Municipal Marketplace Data. And what that top chart shows you is we're currently at the blue line, and the yield curve is still very flat, meaning it's the best of both worlds for you. You were starting to earn a little more on your short-term investments, but the long end of the curve at which you borrow is at all-time lows, basically. The middle snapshot of that chart just shows you this index going back to 1998, and if you look to the far-right-hand side, we drew a red box around it, rates basically have done nothing but come down since November of 2018. Prior to that, all the experts very much thought we were in a rising interest rate environment, and rates have done nothing but fall for the past year, basically. And then the bottom chart's just a blow-up of that red box up above, so you can get a better look of what I'm describing. So if you look at that far right lower corner, you can see the new all-time lows that we set just at the end of August. You can see rates went up a little bit, came down a little bit, went up a little bit. That's a function of when we hit all-time low rates, everybody has a refinancing that works. Everybody may have new money, new capital needs that they'd like to finance at all-time low rates. So supply starts to mobilize, and the market's been doing a great job of digesting that supply, but that's been causing some of those fluctuations. The other thing, things that cause fluctuations are anything that you hear about in the market that sounds uncertain or chaotic, whether it's Brexit, whether it's trade war talk, any of those kinds of topics. The more uncertainty there is in the market, investors get nervous, and they want to park their money somewhere nice and safe. So they pull it out of stocks and equities, and they want to put it into somewhere safe. It doesn't get much safer than Pennsylvania school district bonds, especially with your excellent credit rating. So that's helping to keep these interest rates really low as well at which you can borrow. Okay, so page sixteen, we wanted to show you a couple of different scenarios and gather some input from you, because part of what helped us make a recommendation and a customized plan of finance is input from you on the objectives that you're trying to achieve.
Do you want to put that part on the screen?
Oh, sure.
We have to pull the big one down.
So on page sixteen, this is for illustrative purposes only, but we took a two-step approach to your refunding. So in the blue column, that's the current period refunding of your 2012 bond, and in the red column, that's the current period refunding of your 2013 bond. So the way we would walk through this scenario is if we sell the issues at two different times separated by at least fifteen days, even though they're both close to $10 million and your calendar-year limits for bank-qualified purposes are $10 million per calendar year, we can meet all of the exceptions and rules. Again, as long as they're separated by at least fifteen days, both steps can have the lower bank-qualified rates and the shorter five-year call features by separating them. And so we structured this one with upfront savings. And what that means, down below, I'm jumping down to column five, on step one, the 2012 refunding, you could recognize about $160,000 worth of savings in the current fiscal year, meaning when your spring bill shows up, it would be for $160,000 less. So basically, that's debt service savings, and that money's already sitting in your general fund, for example. And then as you look down column five, in year two, the 2021 budget year that you're going to start working on shortly, I'm sure, the rest of the savings would be recognized, roughly $129,000. And so again, that would be debt service savings. So what you could do, if you wanted to spend the savings on projects of your choosing, is you could budget as if you had not done the refunding and then move that $129,000 to pay for the projects in conjunction with the $160,000 that would already be sitting in your account. And then each year thereafter, your savings are a couple hundred to a couple thousand dollars thereafter for the remaining life of the issue. So that's upfront saving, and as debt service savings, that gives you a lot of flexibility. You don't have to know upfront exactly what projects you want to do, and there's a lot less rules to follow than, say, if you wanted to take the savings at settlement. So this is probably the most flexible option, again, if you want to spend the savings on projects. Then in the red column, we'd come back and do the 2013 refunding, and in column seven, you can see that would generate roughly $87,000 worth of savings in the current year, and that would be available for projects if you so choose. If you don't have projects that you want to spend it on, that money would be in your account, you could move it to an earmark reserve or whatever you want to use it for. It's at your discretion if you take the savings as debt service savings. Moving back up, column one, this assumes that you proceed quickly. We have December in here just as a place marker. The net savings, you can see total 304, almost 305,000 on step one, and on a present value basis, because we always present value everything back to today's dollars, that's net savings of about 300,000 to the district. And I just want to point out that line that says estimated cost from delaying settlement one month. Because we're past the call date on these two issues, every day that goes by that you're paying the old higher rate, there's less and less and less left to refund, less duration. So I always use the term, you're believing savings once you get past the call date. So for every month that goes by on step one, your savings go down about $5,600 a month, and in step two, it's about $3,300 a month by waiting. Then on the next page, we went through the same analysis. The only thing we changed on page seventeen is we said, "What if they don't want to use the savings for projects? What if they don't care if the savings are upfront? What if we use the savings to smooth out their debt service?" So if you do nothing, you have column four right now. So as you look down column four, you can see you're level at $2,020,000, and then it goes up to $2,080,000 before it drops off in 2029. So what page seventeen does is it structures the savings in column five and in column seven to smooth out those bumps, so that the end of the day, what you'd be left with is column eight, and you're pretty smooth at, I'll call that, $2,015,000 a year compared to column four. But now you don't have the savings to spend on projects because you've used them to smooth down your debt service line in your budget. So that's another option. On a present value basis, it's the same answer, basically. Six to one, half to the other. It doesn't matter how you take your savings. When you PV it back to today's dollars, it's the same.
The point is, here, as an independent financial advisor, one of the things we're doing is looking at all of the different alternatives, trying to see really what is the good answer for the school district and what meets the school district's objectives. So that's where it kind of goes to that conversation part that Jamie was mentioning, that depending on really what your needs are going forward, maybe one option lends itself one way versus another way. I would certainly say that these two options that we're showing here tonight are perhaps the bookend options, meaning that the one option where you receive savings as upfront as you naturally can is what we presented first on page sixteen. And then the other bookend option, meaning the other kind of end of the spectrum, is paying, "Let's use those savings to level out our annual payment." And from his perspective, in the business office, knows that every year is more or less going to be about the same. That's what you have right now, but unfortunately, it looks like you have a small jump up in a couple of years. And I think that's what that problem is, realizing we're funding savings back with your 2014 issue and going back up to what it was before then. But the point is, from a budgetary perspective, you have a small increase in a few years. So one of the things that you could do with this refinancing is use those savings to effectively smooth it or basically chop off that lump that exists in the future. So once again, as a kind of independent financial advisor, with the job of Jamie and I is to look at all these options and say, "Okay, look, here are the two goalposts that ultimately this thing may fit within. All right, now let's figure out somewhere either at those goalposts or anywhere in between." So these two options that we're showing here are certainly not the only options that exist for the school district, but they're certainly probably the two and one, and depending on ultimately what your needs are, it may fall somewhere in between.
And they're the two most popular options. Nine and a half out of 10 school districts take the savings upfront because they want access to the savings to do something, whether it's in a one-time kind of something is always recommended because they're one-time savings even though they are spread out over two years. I would say that's the most popular one, but certainly we have clients that use it to smooth out their debt portfolio. It's absolutely viable. Yes?
The debt service, that's after-statement.
Correct.
One of the things that we often like to show, especially with refinancing, is all of our numbers quote what's known as local effort, which is a term that we use to describe your debt service, which is principal plus interest, less the state reimbursement that you receive through the financial process. Because when you do a refinancing, the state is basically reimbursing you on a percentage of that debt service. And just as they, as you as a school district, would realize savings, they would also realize savings. So all the pie that's available in terms of debt service savings, they take a little bit of portion of that because they're paying for a portion of your debt service, which is why all of our numbers, we reflect that true net number for the school district, meaning after-state reimbursement and after everything. For all these ups and settles, this is true dollars to this.
Your PE percentage on these two issues is about 46%, and then that gets multiplied by your market value ratio, so it probably comes out in that range.
It's whatever 46 times 59% is. Yeah, so it's about 20 high points. Yes, all the numbers here, once again, are on a local effort basis, reflecting after, effectively, that 20%.
If you were to plan for that, that's more than tough. What bank qualified means, and why it's important to a potential company to collect these questions?
Yes, thank you. I did gloss over that a little bit. So bank qualified is a special interest rate that you as an issuer, it's tax-exempt, you as an issuer can take advantage of if you have reasonable expectations that you're not going to issue more than $10 million in a calendar year. And these current period refundings, there's exceptions for those, so that's why you could issue almost $20 million in a calendar year and have them both be bank-qualified. But it's a lower interest rate because the banks, it's tax-advantaged to banks to own that type of paper, so there's less of it, and there's a lot of demand for it. That's what drives the rate lower on a bank-qualified issue. The other thing that's super important about bank-qualified is you can get a five-year call feature, and it's not something that we can quantify the value of today, but that five-year call feature will be valuable in the future because it gives you maximum flexibility for either the next time you want to refinance, or if, God forbid, something bad happened and you needed to restructure and stretch this out further, or if something really great happened and you had a windfall and you just wanted to pay it off early, that five-year call feature is important. Because if you issued this all at one time, it would be non-bank qualified, and you'd get an eight-to-10-year call feature and have a lot less flexibility.
Basically buried within the tax code, it basically says to banks, if you buy debt that's called bank-qualified, they get a certain additional tax break to do that, therefore they're willing to accept a slightly lower interest rate because of it. So that's why whenever possible, we always advise our clients, if you have the ability to issue bank-qualified bonds, which means that you reasonably expect to issue less than $10 million per year, to try to do that as much as possible, because generally, it does come with a slightly lower interest rate, and as well as Jamie mentioned, that shorter call feature is especially powerful and especially valuable, especially when you approach interest rates when they're at all-time lows and you have the ability to refinance debt like you do now. So that call feature is what really makes it better.
And that five-year call is more valuable than ever in that federal tax reform that just took effect January 1 of 2018. Before that, you could advance refund before the call date one time in any life of an issue. You could do an advanced refunding on a tax-exempt basis. Federal tax reform took that away. Now you have to wait till the call date and do it at the current period refunding if you want to issue at tax-exempt rates, which are lower than taxable rates. So that's what I mean when I say, "Yeah, more flexibility." It didn't, it used to be quite like this. They eliminated that opportunity.
Do you think you can proceed using that call five, or is it as long as you have to pay now? See, that's a great question, right? Because we're issuing debt at all-time lows, right? Say if we have one and a half, two percent interest rate on the step, are we ever able to refinance the debt? The answer to that question is most likely not. That's a good problem, perhaps, right? That if you can't refinance the debt. But you'd be surprised in the extent that if interest rates went even lower, I mean, if we were speaking German right now, we'd be able to have negative interest rates, right? Because that is an economic condition elsewhere in the world. So if there is the ability to have at least the opportunity to consider, while that may not produce definitive benefits in the future... it certainly gives you enough flexibility such that if we were in an ultra, ultra, ultra-low rate environment, or as Jamie mentioned, the great problem to have once again, if you had a windfall cash, hey, look, I want to defuse or pay off all my debt, the debt has to be callable in order for you to do that. So it's more so about kind of having it just in case. But no, I think you're going to pretty much squeeze most of the juice that can be squeezed out of this. But it's always good, for whatever reason, to have them.
And you never know. In step two, you have about, I don't know, nine years left on that. So when you get past that five-year call, you'd be replacing the nine-year rate with the four-year rate. So even if rates didn't go down, there may be some savings to squeeze out of that. And quite frankly, the old all-time lows were set in the summer of 2016, which wasn't that long ago. And we can't refund those bonds yet on a tax exempt basis because at a minimum, they have five-year calls. They'll become callable in 2021. But if we could refund them right now, there'd be savings. And those are not that long ago, all-time lows.
Until we get to that 0% mark, I think it's definitely something valuable to have. But yes, I certainly agree. You know, ultra-low rate environment, it's still good to have, but maybe not as quite as powerful as where we're refinancing the debt at 6%.
And quite frankly, we're coming off over a decade of all-time low rates, really, in the big picture. And we're doing plenty of refunding. That was a lot of information. We're happy to answer any other questions that you have or if you want to give us some input on your objectives that may give us some additional ideas for how to structure savings and add more value.
Can you give us a close schedule?
Sure. We would have to know, you know, what kind of sale you'd like to pursue, whether it's full-blown competitive or negotiated or that hybrid method. But usually, it takes around, you know, 60 to 75 days to mobilize. So what would happen if you authorized this this evening? We would send an information request to Mr. Marnell's office to collect the information that we need. A lot of it we can get off of Emma because it's all published there as part of your continuing disclosure agreement. But that would allow the finance team, and the finance team, when I say that, is us as your independent financial advisor, your bond counsel, and your local solicitor. But that would allow us to get the paperwork in order to come back with the debt-incurring resolution for your approval. The longest thing right now, the holdup in the timeline, is the credit rating agency. So they're just inundated because we're at all-time low rates and everybody's got transactions. So that's the longest part. I mean, they're taking, you know, up to 20 business days right now. So that would be the longest part. So, you know, by the time you were really ready to sell bonds, you know, maybe it would be in the, you know, December timeframe. Sometimes that's not always the best time to sell bonds because of the holidays and whatnot. But we monitor that for you, and we would tell you when the right time is to go. Quite possibly, January might be the best time to go because not a lot happens the last two weeks of December, and you get this pent-up demand that gets released out of the gate at the beginning of January. So it depends on how fast we can get the credit rating is the short answer. But we would move as quickly as you'd like us to.
If you make the plan based on a final search, you can do a quick discussion as well. If we take, if we were to take the savings upfront and lower payment or elimination of payments, rather than having a closing and getting the actual tax money, then there is a lot of federal income tax issues. We pick up a lot of fine print about what we have to do in six months and what we have to do in another time period about spending it and other requirements that we don't have to do.
Right.
And the big thing perhaps for the board and local community is they don't have to make the commitment tonight for even at the time of the quantity of the exact project that they want to do.
Correct.
That's about into later in the year. But wouldn't have to probably, depending on the money, have a hundred sign fund balance and get the savings, move that into a hundred sign fund balance so that they actually take them other months that are considered a school district's debt in the town. So the money will be in the project. It's sort of a jump to the next step there.
Yes, you can do that to earmark it for something in the future.
And the good news is that what we're showing on page 16, that upfront savings options, basically skips all the fine print, as you mentioned, because you're not formally that way. You're simply realizing those savings from a financial perspective. So if we were to do page 16, we wouldn't have to worry about all that fine print. And as you said, there's a little bit more time to decide if you did want to use those savings for capital projects, what capital projects those are. There is something that we can decide on later down the road and not in conjunction with this. The definite advantage of taking the savings over time as opposed to truly squeezing them out and settling them such that in December or whenever this thing settles, you get a physical check. Then comes all of the kind of restrictions from federal tax laws, which if you're not sure what the projects are, I'm not even sure if bond counsel would really feel that comfortable with it. So once again, this scenario where you're just anticipating savings allows you to give you that flexibility to basically decide later. And you don't have to do capital projects, but, you know, obviously, if you did have stuff, it could help a lot.
Do they have to make a decision? As you mentioned, the finder's sale to get the board board to decide if that money is going to have even one communication tonight or not about going to the competitive.
That would be helpful because that changes the documents that get prepared a little bit. You know, if it's a full-blown competitive, there's an invitation to bid that is crafted that invites all the registered broker-dealers out there to bid on your issue. It's just different documents are associated with each.
Yeah, I would say if you truly weren't certain and needed some more time to think about that, there you could have given basically the blessing to the financial advisor and bond counsel to move forward with the documents that they need to, we would need to prepare. We would just need to get guidance from you at a later point before a resolution is adopted as to what method you would want to go. So what it would do is just add a little bit of time, that 60 to 75 days we just talked about. If you wanted to come back with another decision available, what type of sale you wanted. But yeah, the pedal to the metal scenario is if you give us guidance tonight, but of course, if you're not ready or if you're not sure what you want to do, we could, you know, basically give up, but let me move forward, do what we need to do on our end without filling in some of those blanks. And then that decision would come later.
The preliminary official statement and the debt resolution are basically the same regardless. Those are the two biggest documents.
What is your purpose? Do you have a recommendation?
We have clients that do both. You know, our job is to bring back the best deal possible for you. You know, about half of our clients do full-blown competitive. They're the best banker underwriter to win. And about half of them have existing relationships. That's the number one reason people do negotiated. They have an existing relationship with a banker underwriter. And then, you know, a small portion of our clients have to do negotiated sales because they either have a poor credit rating or there's something about their issue that's just not playing vanilla enough to do full-blown competitive with.
Are there the law?
No. No, not at all.
I'm trying to find here the difference between the three methods.
Sure. And to your point, we've been seeing some extra-good competitive sale results in this market that has so much supply. Because, you know, if you're doing negotiated and your underwriter just happens to be saturated that week with bonds, you know, they're not hungry. Their investors aren't looking for more paper. So what we've been seeing lately with all this supply coming to market is the competitive sales have been doing better than ever because it ferrets out the firm out there that needs bonds for their investors.
I would say the only reason why we wouldn't do competitive sales is if your structure was really long, you had a really poor credit rating or market conditions were super volatile. And we don't, we aren't checking the box either on those. So I would say if we did check the box on any of those three, it doesn't, the reasons perhaps slide more to the right on this page. But once again, we're in great market conditions. You have a very credit rating, and your structure is short. As you mentioned, 29 or so years. And that part is that you don't have business super volatile. So with those set of facts, and as long as, you know, that was the type of direction we were looking for, that more lends itself towards the left-hand side of this page, those set of facts.
Can you project a, for that A-plus credit rating?
I believe that's your existing credit rating. That we're not rating the asset right now.
What's that?
That was from 2015. I'm looking at the rating report right now. It's actually an A underline, which is still extremely strong.
And the rating agencies do annual surveillance, even if you don't hear from them. You know, they got a lot of backlash after the financial meltdown in 2008 for not doing surveillance and keeping up on everybody's credit rating. So they do annual surveillance every single year, whether you actually hear from them or not. I mean, they're looking at what's posted on Emma. You know, they might call and say, hey, I have a couple of questions to your business office. But they're paying attention more so than ever.
They did. I don't know if I could, if you could deal with it. The value, the missing value in bringing it up, the number, the size, whether or not it's still in a competitive, there's a camaraderie person.
Just that every month that goes by that you don't get to point a sale and locking in rate, you know, you are believing savings.
But you're not taking a loan, which is especially what you're trying to figure here, with, I don't know if you're going to do that or not.
If you get into what?
If you're really trying to come to a loan.
Well, and that would be a first step in the dual-track process. The bank loan RFP part is like the hybrid center column. You know, that's the physical RFP that gets sent out to a bunch of banks.
The general thinking, are there, it's not going to be as good as the model filling the back, accelerating the call?
Yeah, the general rule of thumb, the general rule of thumb with bank loans is that it has to come with a slightly higher interest rate but come with much to get less costs associated with it. So you get a slightly higher rate, but you get paid less to do it.
And that's why we boil everything down to true interest cost so we can compare apples to apples.
Exactly. That true interest cost is the one single interest rate that includes not only the interest expense, but also the payment. So generally speaking, banks have a slightly higher interest rate if one gets cheaper to do it. So it's always a conundrum about what do you do? Do you think you can do the thing that you can pay a little bit more for but get a lower interest rate in the light? Or can you do the thing that gets a completely higher interest rate and you pay less to do it? That's our job as a financial advisor, is to come to you with recommendations about which one of those options makes the most sense. If we boil it down into factors that you can easily understand, and one of those easily understanding is in that the all-in interest rate of a bank loan is X, and the all-in interest rate of a bond issue is Y. And if this X is less than Y, then we want to go with X. And that's really kind of how we boil it down to the best project.
And we can start that component of the plan. We can start the bank loan RFP process right away.
So if the board was to try to, not if they want to do this, do the time of day that they consider, remember being competitive and that one.
That's a little bit too much because it's the credit rating that's the hang-up on the bond issue. So, you know, we have to get the documents in good enough order to give them to the credit rating so they can start their analysis. And that's taking, you know, 20 business days is pretty much a whole month when you add in weekends and holidays to get that credit rating. But we could certainly get the bank loan RFP responses back and compare that to the bond market. You just might not quite be ready to lock in in the bond market at that point in time. That is a distinct possibility. But we would have to hit the ground running to do that. And the other thing about the credit rating, so they're the only entity in the entire transaction that wants to get paid no matter what. You know, the rest of us on the financing team, if the market moves away and you never do this, you don't know what to dine. But the rating agency will want 75% of their fee no matter what. And I've never understood that, but that's always been the way it is. So we'll call that, you know, a $10,000 kind of number. So I never go and get a credit rating until I'm sure that we can deliver exactly what you're looking for. So I don't start that process until I know exactly what you're looking for.
I think to Jamie's point, when we go down the dual-track process, right? The bank loan, one of the tracks, keep going. But you can go through that RFP process over and over.
And that's no harm, no foul, even if you just reject them all, that's fine.
No, we can do that. And while that same path is going down on the left-hand side, on the right-hand side, there's bond issue. But Jamie's point, we only want to hit that bond issue so far because once we cross over a certain point, which includes the impound rate, now it's on the year, on the 75% of that fee, approximately 10%. We don't want to do that path, half that certain point, unless we're certain that that's going to happen. So that's why oftentimes with this approach, what we can do is start the dual-track banking process. Start to generate the documents and collect the information that we need to go down the bond issue path. Once again, we don't cross that threshold of going to a credit rating and obligating you to the cost until we're certain that a bond issue is going to make sense. And that may not be to November timeframe anyway, once we get to a day. All the documents from the bank loans are going, and then all the research and documentation.
So to lay out a response to the question, the proposal, the bill, the time line, just where it's going to end and putting it in place. To find out if it has a dead point with it. If you still want it to be going in the top order of the bank loan, then you need to get back to us at a point where the timeline is 10% lower.
What are your assumptions?
Yeah, I'll. There is, I've already, this is my part of the, my part of creating a timeline for the initiative, the loan, the commission, the support. I just want to see maybe a story, a process. Just push back in the timeline, the issue, because they're coming.
So I think that, you know, the point is that the timeline and the RFP response were pedal to the metal standard, right? We need to move as quickly as we could. This is what it could look like. Obviously, we work at the pace that you were referring to in March. So to the extent that, you know, November meeting becomes December meeting or what has it, you know, the only thing, which once again, from the financial perspective that Jamie and I are concerned about, is we don't want to have this thing sit out for too long. Two reasons. First, because as Jamie mentioned, every month that we go past, we lose money because we simply, there's not enough interest to fund every time we go past the call date. But secondly, there's interest rate risk, right? That if markets were to go up, there's unfortunately nothing we can do about that, right? So there's nothing we can do to predict that. So to the extent that you move quickly, it helps reduce or mitigate that interest rate risk. So those are the two major things in our mind. Obviously, we don't want to rush through the process or rush you through the process. But we do have to be cognizant of both ways. Because it doesn't mean actual dollars to the school district at the end of the day.
Why did the Federal Reserve leave that for that point?
That's a great question. That is, the actions by the Federal Reserve, this next meeting as well, the subsequent meetings, it's going to be focus of the market. You know, that is something, quite frankly, that changes every day. The good news is that a lot of that stuff gets baked in in advance, meaning that when the actual Federal Reserve makes a decision, either to cut or to hike, in this case, it would obviously be cut if they wanted to do anything, that is kind of a non-news event that day, meaning that all the reactions to the market, it's happened the weeks before. So it's a big event in the market that people focus on. But in terms of the actual day, it's kind of, I don't want to say a whole lump thing, but it's kind of everyone, all right, we already knew that was going to happen. The market's already digested it. And generally speaking, things don't tend And generally speaking, things don't tend to be as volatile as they are in the week, meaning not when people are speculating about what they do. It's always the buy the rumor, sell the news type thing. The same type of thing with the Federal Reserve and insurance as well. Keep in mind, what they're controlling is short-term investment risk, not the long-term borrowing rates that we would be dealing with here.
And the prediction that's already baked in, the futures prediction is eighty-four percent, I think it was today, that they'll decrease at their October meeting here, very shortly. And it's ninety-seven percent, you know, that'll happen by the end of the calendar. So, it's a pretty good indication that it might happen here in October.
But, I would say all the kind of effects of that, if you will, is already baked in the market. Especially if they didn't really, you know, not going to issue themselves, you know, getting the money.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I thought it was twenty-first, then it's twenty-eighth. Okay, that's all. Thank you. Boy, man, I'm not, I'm going to go ahead.
I think I called, what's it called?
Pebbles to Metal.
Um, time nine, the response to the question.
Why would you want to take four hundred thousand?
So, that's good. And it might not work at credit making, too, definitely.
You like to do that, wouldn't you? I appreciate that. Two weeks ago, we didn't have four hundred thousand. Now you have it, why do you have to spend a little bit? I like to take a break, but I won't be here. When you guys make it.
If you guys look in this on page seventeen, it's the timeline.
There are people there?
Yes.
All right. Jamie and Chris, what caused that ten-month slide from, oh, early November of 2018, around 2.75 percent, down to early September to 1.2 percent? And now it's gone jagged again?
Sure. So, I think a lot of the kind of movement in the interest rate market over the past nine months has been related to some of the global surveys about trade. A lot of the trade tension, both U.S. and international, has really folks worried about where the economy is going. Meaning that if there are perhaps roadblocks in the way in the form of tariffs or whatever it's been created, a lot of folks have been afraid that that may slow down economic growth. And when economic growth slows, typically, people seek to take deep state investments, and those investments often include bonds, which is why you see interest rate figures dropped throughout 2019. It's because a lot of people are kind of worried about, hey, look, we've been on a ten-year bull run in the market here. Where are we going to go from here? I need some state investments. And keep in mind, also, a lot of folks are here in retirement age. And you're investing a horizon, and you approach retirement age a lot quicker, meaning that you're typically investing more bonds in portfolios, or say, equity portfolios.
So, there was a peak there in November. It's hard to tell from this chart when in November last year. And then it started a nice, long slide with a few blips up here and there. Do you see that perhaps in November, maybe a repeat of this chart, where it will rise up again, and then during the late holiday season into the winter months, the appetite will pick up, and there will be more of a demand, and perhaps interest rates will start to go back down again?
Yeah, unfortunately, our crystal ball has broken long ago. If we don't try to predict interest rates, it's not a very pleasing thing. I think what happened in last November was the results of the big federal election and change in the House, perhaps had the market spooked about different things. That might not obviously be as helpful here in 2019. But, the point is that, as Jamie mentioned, typically towards the end of the year, we get to a point where, especially up to the last two weeks of December, it's pretty much a non-asset in the market, just because, you know, first of holidays and all that sort of stuff. But, no, I don't think we see anything that's fairly on the radar that's going to either point to rates going higher or lower. But, with the caveat that we haven't more, will we ever claim to be able to see that? If we try to say it's all historic in 2020. But, no, we are not predicting interest rates.
Safe answer. Now, historically, what has happened in municipal bond markets in presidential election years?
That's a great question. A lot of times, it has to do with kind of how big the politics and of the president. For example, what really moved bond markets higher in 2015 was the notion of a lot of infrastructure that was going to be built following the election in 2015. That generally put interest rates higher, as well as a more business-friendly environment, a less regulated environment for business. Meant that, you know, people were going to seek perhaps the returns of those higher-risk assets such effectively. So, you thought people always come out of the state investment into the more risky investment, as could physically perceive, that at the time, there'd be a more friendly environment for businesses, you know, large corporations going forward, because of the deregulation.
Now, looking at this chart that you provided on page fifteen, at one point, if you could draw a line where, sort of like the break-even line, where doing a refinancing or refunding would not present, or not give a net saving, so to speak. In other words, you cross over a line where it doesn't make sense to do it. What interest rate increment would that be?
Give me two seconds to do some math here. So, for every one change, every change in one basis point being point zero one percent, about $4,000 in difference, about $5,000, you can make the math. On step one, you have about $300,000 in savings. So, all markets, again, brought back in the envelope here, any change in about fifty basis points or point six percent would wipe out your savings on step one. And just to give you an idea, with fifty basis points, sounds like a lot, but when you turn to that page in the interest rate chart, we dropped nearly a hundred basis points throughout the year. So, just as we fell down, you know, we were sitting in this chair, which is why you back up to these mannequins, right? We were sitting in these chairs a year ago, to think about the recent failures. But, where we are now, it obviously is. Yeah, so with step one, they call it about fifty basis points. With step two, one data you do, one's a little bit smaller, four grand. Yeah, so probably, that one's even probably smaller, about thirty, twenty-five or thirty-eight basis points, I think.
So, it would be basically pointless to watch the bond buyers index on a daily basis to see, to try to predict where the interest rate would go?
Yeah. You know, unless you have to do this by yourself, you can please do share. Yeah, no, unfortunately, it is, especially in this day and age about how volatile the markets are. You know, things move now in a day that ten, fifteen years ago, it took two weeks to move that much. You know, we could be sitting here in two weeks, and things are fifty basis points lower or fifty more higher, not outside the normal possibility of a price.
Thank you.
I guess I have one more question. First motion we're going to be looking at is hiring a bond counsel. Did you get a chance to see what his fees were?
No, we have not had any discussion for any of it.
It's basically eighteen thousand for one issue, fourteen of each for two issues. And from all your experience, where are we at on that place?
So, on speaker Jamie, I can say that's extremely reasonable for a bond counsel, effective from the firm that was even.
No, it didn't work.
Oh, did what, sorry. Even there are various, there are a ton of work in the area of airway and these bond counselors in the area. I would say that's extremely, extremely, you know, in the ballpark for what we see for our other clients, not only if it's more of a, other law firms.
Right. Do you find it normal for your municipal clients to already have, pick their bond counsel? Or do you also competitively bid out bond counsel services?
Typically, people have already picked their bond counsel. Nine point nine times out of ten, it's a bond counsel of record. You know, occasionally, bond counsel will change from one case to another. But, that's at your discretion, and we work with all the bond counsels there out there.
Are we ready to move on? Our motion? Under counsel, bond counsel services, the board is asked to consider the approval of Benzmore &amp; Soul L.L.P. bond counsel engagement letter for potential bond issue or issues at a charge for a single bond issue of $18,000. If there are multiple bond issues, the cost is $14,000 for the first issue, and the second issue, which will follow in approximately fifteen days, will be $14,000. Also, there will be separate reimbursements for costs I will proceed for the financing. I will see $2,000 per bond issue. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second? Second. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Beisfield?
Yes.
Mr. Carton?
Yes.
Mr. Palcoski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey? Shalva and Shu Asa.
Approving financial advisor? South Pointe School District has issued a request for proposal from independent financial advisor for advising on refinancing bond issue or issues, 2012 G O B and/or 2013 G O B. South Pointe School District received a revised proposal from P F M Financial Advisors LLC hereafter P F M in a proposed contract, some of which was correcting commissions or making revisions after the deadline. The school board has held a public meeting on October 22nd, 2019. With P F M and obtained information, the above preamble is incorporated by reference as part of this resolution and not as mere recital. The board weighs any irregularities in the submission of their response to the request for proposal. The board awards the contract to P F M Financial Advisors LLC according to the terms of its engagement letter attached hereto, incorporated by reference, including exhibits A through E. The board accepts the proposed scheduled work activity and decision-making as stated in the response to the request for proposal. Do we have a?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second? Discussion?
Sure.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carton?
Yes.
Mr. Palcoski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beisfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey? Shalva and Shu Asa.
Do me a second.
Uh, Mrs. Smith made a mention. Resolution for bond refinancing solicitor? The board authorized the agreed case solicitor David G. Petronik for legal services related to the refinancing of the G O B series of 2012 and/or G O B series of 2013 for all work, including assistance with preliminary and final official statement, document preparation and review, and communications with a financial advisor, bond counsel, and school officials, and attendance at any special meeting of the school board, therefore, through bond or bank loan settlement as follows. Number one, if one bond issue, whether only one, for the above series or combined, the sum of $6,000 as a fixed fee, but only if there is a closing. But, if there is a bank borrowing, then the sum of $4,000, but only if there is a closing. Number two, if there are two separate bond issues, the sum of $6,000 for the first bond issue. If there is a closing, and $3,000 for the second bond issue, but only if there is a closing. And number three, if there is one bond issue and one bank borrowing, then the sum of $6,000 for the bond issue if it closes, and $2,500 for the bank borrowing if it closes. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Second. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Palcoski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beisfield?
Yes.
Mr. Carton?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey? Shalva and Shu Asa.
Just to be clear then, the way we've voted, you've actually approved the, as much as it can be accomplished, the tight time schedule that was in the response to the request for proposal. So, we don't know at this point whether or not, when they come back in November, there will have been enough time to get, I guess that's where I'm not clear. Is that when we give you the go-ahead to get the credit rating? Or are we going to need another meeting before then?
That's when we done in November.
Okay, so if we have the credit rating, moving forward with that in November, would there also be a vote on the bond resolution in November, or does that go to December?
We can do a parameters resolution in November, if we not have all the final E T Ls in there.
So, with a parameters resolution, you would lay out what, the board would decide whether or not the savings would be adequate at a certain point, and if it were, it would authorize certain officials to, in effect, pull the string and start, get the tail blown. Is there anything more that we need to do tonight to give you instructions on those parts? I mean, it looks like this is, we're trying to proceed as expeditiously as possible. So, doesn't seem like we need any further resolutions there then.
What we can do is, when we get back to the office, we'll refresh that timeline more specifically to that, to make sure that we're all engaged, but not if that timeline is laid out coming back in November, but if it's not made, I think we'll.
So, if something... So if something on your end looked like it needed a board approval, the meeting for the 14th is a planning session, it's not normally specially advertised to do business, to vote. So if you needed that, we would need to know several days in advance. The one on the 21st is a regularly scheduled board voting meeting. But the, if, if we were to do a parameters resolution for the 21st, that'd still have to be advertised in advance. It's in a really tight schedule. Okay.
We have signed agreement, and then you need to sign agreement now?
You could sign that, yeah. Yes. You can do that at the end, second. Anything else we may, uh... One second. Was the one that you handed in the one with all the exhibits?
Do you want to do your other motion, or the... The IDEA 619 sub-grant agreement, do we have a motion for that?
Just, just to be clear, I always like to make sure everyone knows what they're talking about. The IU is the sub-grantee of our federal funds. This agreement states that the district agreed to spend the money for appropriate special education expenses to comply with all IDEAB and IDEA 619 regulations. So we're entering, entering into an agreement with the WIU for agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Second? Discussion? Roll call? Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Beisfield?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Palaskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Questionary, seven to ask. Board report? Superintendent report?
I have none.
Solicitor information?
I have been working on the timeline for the Act One budget process. I thought I was going to make it tonight, didn't quite, so I'm going to try to find a way for, you know, an email or something to go out so that you would have that before the, the November meeting.
That's it. Citizens comment? Listening to a jury?
I'll move.
Second? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.